All right, so we just start the meeting at 7:02 and we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance. All right, now we're gonna do, we're gonna do some of our business in the front and then we'll get to the joint meeting. So we have the schedule of bills? Okay. Yes, can I get a motion?
I move that the Plymouth School Committee accept and approve the report and Accounts Payable Warrant Number S-042816 dated April 28th, 2016 in the amount of $1,927,876.40 as presented.
All in favor? Awesome, unanimous, yes. Dr. Sworson, right? Perfect. All right, and now we want to do our next piece of business is, sorry, my computer's going anywhere, but it's the proposed calendar for next year, revision of the calendar for next year, did you want to talk on that? Yes, Mr. Campbell?
Grabbing microphones. As you all know, we had a proposed calendar either one meeting or two meetings back, there has been, there have been two change, proposed changes to this calendar primarily because of full day kindergarten and also due to the College Board. As you all know, we participate in SATs, School Day, PSATs, SATs, all of our students' grades nine through 12 participate in our high schools. Typically, that test is done the first Wednesday of October and the College Board has moved it to October 19th. Originally, we had October 19th as an in-service professional development day, so given the fact that the College Board is administering all of the assessments, we can't do that. So there's, there are two changes to the calendar. One is the October in-service day has been changed from October 19th to October 12th, so you see that in your documents. So October 19th is no longer a half-day, it's a full day, and October 12th would be the half-day. And then also, given the fact that we have full-day kindergarten next year, we no longer have the reference to half-day having no school. So those changes are reflected in the new proposed calendar dates.
It's an action item? Do I have a, Spur just moves it. Do I have a second? Mr. Morgan seconds it. All in favor? Unanimous. All right, our next piece of business is comments from the community members. Do I have any community members who are here to talk to us outside of our joint meeting? All right, that brings it to our, sorry, our joint meeting's beginning. So first of all, I just wanted to extend Mr. Bagley's apologies that he couldn't be here tonight. He had an emergency work me, uh, schedule, so he's currently been working for 13 days straight, so he's gonna, he won't be, wasn't able to join us tonight. But first of all, I'd just like to thank you all for your time and your dedication and for coming out here tonight for our, what we hope will be the first of an annual, annual meetings every year with these joint meetings. Um, let's see, we hope that tonight you, that'll be a meaningful exchange for all of us in our work to continue to build the district. I hope that you'll participate by asking questions and sharing your ideas with us tonight. Your work for the schools and the students is very important, and on behalf of the school committee, I'd like to thank each and every one of you for the hours of time that you put into building our schools. And, um, sorry, we also want to make sure that each of you continues the conversation, that the conversation doesn't end here tonight, that if you have a question, if you have something that you need, that you can talk to any school committee member, that we'd really love to hear your ideas so that they can go not just in your school, but be expanded on other schools. So this is, it's a great opportunity to really share ideas that work throughout. And again, just thank you so much for coming tonight, and I'd like to introduce Stephanie Gray, Massachusetts PTA President.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Stephanie Gray, Massachusetts PTA President and Plymouth resident. My children both attend Plymouth North High School. And I have to say, we don't necessarily appreciate our own school district until we start taking a look across the state and across the country at some of the issues that other families and students are going through. And I have to say, hands down, Plymouth has a phenomenal school district. Can we, are there room for improvement? Absolutely. But we don't recognize how good we really have it until we start looking at other school districts. And some of that's thanks to our school committee, who does a phenomenal job making sure that every decision that happens is in the best interest of our students, our families, and our teachers. Thank you very much for all that. I also want to thank Dr. Maestis, who, without him, PTA wouldn't necessarily be as strong or as big in Plymouth as it is. When he came on board, coming in from out-of-state in a district that was a heavy PTA district, coming to Plymouth, we were not a heavy PTA district. We now have 10 units in the town of Plymouth. And I think PTA has done a really good job supporting the schools, giving the parents a voice. A lot of us work in our schools for our local schools, for our kids, for our families, and do fundraising, but PTA is much bigger, and some of you know that. Some of you know the advocacy work that we've done on a state and federal level. On the state level, we have done a lot of work with our local legislators to ensure funding. We're in the process right now of working with the state legislature on LGBTQ issues to ensure that those kids have a safe place to be, that they're comfortable, that they have appropriate support services. We're working on special needs students, ensuring that they have what they need, that the families have those supports. Myself, I'm working right now on the MCAS 2.0 Task Force and making sure that as we revamp the MCAS test, parents' voices are there, we're being heard, we're in that mix. So all of those pieces come together at a state level, and at a federal level, I'm also proud to say that Kim Hunt, school committee member, is also our state fed ledge chair. And we're working with our federal legislators on, we actually worked to ensure that ESSA, Every Student Succeeds Act, passed, and now we're working on funding the family engagement centers through that. We're asking our legislators for $10 million to support that program. So there are things that PTA is doing on a grander scale that you don't necessarily see, but if you see something come up legislatively or you feel something needs to happen, please call us, let us know, so that we can work on your behalf to do that, specifically with the special needs issues, and we've talked about that a little bit in the past with some of you. So tonight, I have handed out to our school committee members, we recently had our Massachusetts PTA Annual Conference, and I handed out to them excerpts from our, from our conference, and some of the excerpts in there include our awards. And I'm really pleased to announce that a number of Plymouth schools received awards, including the Carol Woodbury Leadership Award, which was awarded to Karen, okay, Karen's name is not, I'm not gonna be able to say this, Gullian from Nathaniel Morton, did I do okay? All right. From Nathaniel Morton Elementary School, PTA. The Spirit of PTA Award was awarded to Kate Angley from Nathaniel Morton also, Kathy, okay, Suri's, thank you, thank you. Indian Brook, I should have written this phonetically for myself, Indian Brook Elementary School. And then the Outstanding Principal of the Year was awarded to Michael Spencer from Nathaniel Morton Elementary School. Yay. And we also gave out male involvement awards to Indian Brook Elementary School and Nathaniel Morton Elementary School, because it's just as important to have our dads involved, and I like looking up into the audience and seeing lots of men here, so that's very nice to see, thank you. I also want to commend West Elementary School for receiving, yay, for receiving an award from the Library Association, and it is, sorry, I've lost my little piece of paper here. Give me one second here. They received the Parents as Library Supporters Award for 2016, recognized by the Massachusetts School Library Association, and they're gonna be going to receive their award at their annual meeting April 30th, correct? Excellent, congratulations. I also want to let you know that membership in Massachusetts PTA is very important, and in part because when we meet with the governor, with legislators at the State House, with legislators in the federal government, when I walk in and I say, "I represent 14,000 families across the state of Massachusetts," they listen. If I walked in and I said, "I come from Plymouth North High School," they'd like, be happy to talk to me, but it doesn't quite mean as much as when I show up and say, "I represent 14,000 families across the Commonwealth." And I want to thank Indian Brook Elementary School for having a 24% increase in their membership this year. I want to thank West Elementary for having a 50% increase in their membership this year. Plymouth Family Network for a 325% increase in their membership this year. And Plymouth South Middle School for a 440% increase in their membership this year. And I do have Plymouth South Middle School's certificate to give them as well. So thank you all for the hard work that you do to increase your membership so that we can all do the work that needs to be done on behalf of our children and families. So I think that's everything that I had, did I miss anything? Maybe, maybe not, okay. The one other piece of information that I did hand out to the school committee is National PTA's policy agenda for this year, so if you have any questions about anything that's happening on a federal level, all of this information is available on the Mass PTA website as well, if anybody wants any of this. And again, I just want to say thank you to all of you, our volunteers, all of you who make everything that we do happen for our kids, for our families, for our teachers, thank you to our school committee, thank you to our superintendent. I appreciate everything, and if you ever need anything, please don't hesitate to call. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Well, everybody, welcome. My name's Gary Maestis, I'm the Superintendent of Schools, and tonight, we hope to have an opportunity to visit with you and share some information regarding the happenings of the district, our strategic plans, some policy work that has been happening at the school committee level, also some other items that we've been working on, some financial information that we want to share with you, sound practices for financial record-keeping, like we, we're kind of crazy about record-keeping, so Mr. Costin will, will talk about that. But we have a very special guest speaker here today, and he's gonna kick off tonight. And his name is Glenn Kuchar. Glenn is, Dr. Kuchar is actually the Executive Director of the Mass Association of School Committees, and he is the person who runs the organization that supports school committees all over the Commonwealth. And I called him a couple weeks ago on behalf of the school committee to see if he would come and talk about the work of school committee and the whole concept of community engagement and the whole idea of working with schools and parents to enhance the happenings of, of a school system. We're very fortunate to have Glenn. He has always extended the welcome, or he's always, always come to Plymouth. I've called him several times over the years, and he just shows up, and we're very grateful for that, his dedication to the school systems in Massachusetts, but more importantly, I think he really understands the work of school committees. He was the Chair of the Cambridge School Committee for many years, so he has a lot of experience at listening to issues on both sides of, of the table. So without further delay, I'd like to introduce Glenn Kuchar, the Executive Director of the Mass Association of School Committees.
Thank you. I want to preface my remarks by explaining that I wear several hats. I'm very proud to be a life member of the Massachusetts PTA, but I'm also the president of my local Brief is Good Club. I always remember before, you know, if you've been to graduations, you know how excruciating they can be. At one graduation, I was the school board member who was giving the graduation speech, and Jim DeLeo, the custodian, said something to me that I will never forget, which was, "Keep it short, Kuchar, people got things to do." I do, however, first of all, it's, it's great to be here and see a lot of familiar faces. Kim Hunt and Stephanie Gray are old friends from the advocacy field. We both, we have all been members of Mass Partners, which is a coalition of advocacy groups that works together to thwart the bad guys. Who are the bad guys? The bad guys are the people who have created the nation's most rancid regulatory climate for schools. The reams of regulations, the tons of directives, the opinion letters that are passed off as law without authority are making the jobs of teachers and principals and superintendents extremely difficult. And I'm very happy to be working with Stephanie and Kim as they continue to participate in this effort just to bring these things to everyone's attention, which is why I am very happy to be here speaking to a roomful of parent activists, people who are involved in working as volunteers, but in very important ways to deal with their schools. I had the experience of being a member of the school board at a time when parents were just beginning to be allowed to be involved in some of the more important things. I'm assuming, for example, you are involved in search committees if someone's looking for a principal or an administrator of some kind, or maybe a teacher. That didn't always happen. People, a lot of, a lot of people who ran school districts wanted parents to be seen, but not heard, wanted them to show up for events, but just don't get too active. Our association makes a very aggressive effort, not only to work with school councils and PTAs and PTOs, but to train school councils in their work. In fact, I do a lot of training of school committee members, and we train them all on Saturdays, we have big 60, 70, 80 members, new members of school committees coming, and we talk to them about how school systems work, the role of school committees, and the role of policymaking. And that's usually on a Saturday, and then by Wednesday, I start getting calls from the superintendent saying, "You told them what?" Well, I brought with me, on the table here, a list of almost 30 different areas in which school councils have become involved, and what they've done, working as school councils or as PTAs and PTOs. Because, you know, the role of the PTA and the role of the school council, very similar, they overlap a little bit, they're slightly different in some ways, but people generally work together in those capacities. And the reason that we work so hard to train them is twofold, actually threefold. Number one, when you bring parents into the circle and you get them involved in things like how policy is made, or civic events, or activities with the school, or discussions about what's happening in the field of education, they like it. And they not only want to stay in here more, they refuse to leave. So when we started having parents involved in interviewing for positions, that was the best insurance we had, that there would be true civic engagement, meaningful involvement, and participation in some of the activities related to school. So we view you first as insurance that the right things will continue to happen, or that good things will happen, or if something's happening that isn't going so well, somebody is, is here to speak truth to power and, and help resolve it. Number two, 60% of our school committee members come through the PTO, the PTA, or school councils. So you are, I don't want to use the term "the farm system," but you're the farm system for school committees, and we rely on you to become involved and to learn what's happening. And if you don't think that there are great opportunities here, just so that you know, there are 40 members of the state legislature who came from school committees, including three very prominent people who came out of parent organizations. The, the House Majority Leader, Pat Hadad, from Somerset, was very active in her school district before she went to the school committee, then the legislature, and now she's the Majority Leader. Arguably, the second or third most powerful legislator in the state, Karen Spilka, was a, was a parent organizational president in Ashland before she went to the House and then the Senate, and now she's driving the Senate budget discussion. It's always great to have friends in the House. I don't know, we were talking a little bit about ESSA, the Elementary and Secondary Education Act. We have sort of mixed feelings about it, we're glad to see it enacted. It did transfer a lot of authority from Washington to local government. Unfortunately, the Congress thinks local government is the state and not the school district. It's creating a bit of a problem with us, because now the guys in, in Malden tend to think that they've been empowered to do what they do. But ESSA, what drove a lot of what is local empowerment in that bill was somebody you may have heard of, Patty Murray, a Senator from Washington, who went to the legislature and the Senate from the school board. So if you have political ambitions, this may be the place, it may not be. So let me talk to you a little bit about what the school committee does, how it's related to what happens with parent organizations and parent groups. Let me just do a quick poll here. How many PTA members are here? Okay, and how many of you are here because you are involved in friends of athletics or music or drama or, okay. You have a question? She's, she's in, okay. Let me explain what the school committee does. The school committee has five major functions. They hire the superintendent, they establish the budget, and they have a fiduciary responsibility to watch the money. It's why no bill is paid in the, in the town of Plymouth without the school committee signing off on the bill. They oversee union negotiations, collective bargaining is done by the school committee and its, and its designated people, and they set district policy. If you think of it, they're the legislature for schools in Plymouth. You also have the town meeting or town council. The town meeting is the legislature for the other side, and the schools, the legislature is the school committee. So they set policy, essentially the law, discipline policies, attendance policies, grading policies, you can get to anything through policy. And that's why policymaking is very important. In fact, the most important element of goals, of policy, is goal-setting and planning, which I'll get to in a second. But more importantly, school committees represent the values of the community. They are the heart and soul of the community. Many people view the school district through the school committee and the schools themselves as, as a body, and they bring values to the table. So when you talk about a school committee that's looking at lesbian, gay, transgender, bisexual students and their concerns, when you talk about a school committee that's looking at the social and emotional well-being of students, when a school committee integrates the culture of its citizens into its curriculum, you're talking about people who represent the heart and soul of the community. And as do the parent groups, the civic engagement element in Plymouth and in other communities, you're the very grassroots of what the heart and soul of any community is, especially in Plymouth. And I know, I'm not just saying this because you're here, I go all over the state, I deal with districts that are in trouble. You should walk into a building like this and kiss the floor. This is a great district, it's a great town, you don't have trouble. Everybody's got issues, you may have issues, but this is a wonderful place to be. That is not the product of something that happened by accident last week. It's the product of the community being engaged, the school committee representing the interests of the community, the administration representing the priorities of the community through the school committee, and people doing the right thing over a long period of time. You should be proud of yourselves. But as I said, they represent your values, which ultimately lead everything in the direction of student achievement. Now, the role of parents is very important in student achievement as parents of children, but the role of parents involved in the school district and parents serving on the school committee and school committee members is a little less direct. You can provide your children with lots of support at home and do all the right things as a parent, and really give them a good head start. But how do you affect what happens in the classroom when it's the teachers, the paraprofessionals, the support people in the school, and the supervisors who guide them, who actually make the difference? And that's why it's about student achievement, and we also work with school committees to give them training on how they can do their work to affect student achievement. And one of the 12 characteristics of very effective school boards that lead to student achievement increases is an engaged community, engaged parents, and parents who are welcomed in the schools. It sends a very positive message, it has a very definite effect. There's something that I, I was on my school committee for 12 years, but I always had a day job, and my day job was as, I'm actually a gerontologist, for those of you who deal with people who age, I'm not a clinician, I don't touch patients. But we talk about the field of aging and how people age, and there's something called the halo effect. And the halo effect is when, when something good happens to somebody, the people around them see that as a good model. So when your children see you attending to the needs of your parents, they see good modeling and it lasts for a long time, but it has to be sustained over a period of time. And parents and school committees that do the right thing over a sustained period of time will actually do that. So how do school committees do that? And how do they involve the community in doing it? Well, it sounds a bit bureaucratic, but strategic planning and goal-setting is among the most important functions that school committees engage in and that you can involve school councils in developing. How many of you are also school council members? Okay, so there's a lot of what I might call inter, board interconnectivity. When you work on your school improvement plan, that school improvement plan didn't just come from, it didn't just come from nowhere, I hope there are no English teachers in the room, it comes from a specific place. The goals are set by the school committee with input from the community. The goals go to the superintendent, translate into the superintendent's goals and the mission of the school district in one. And they're all included in a strategic plan where the goals are set, the tasks to achieve those goals are identified, and the responsible people are also specified along with a timeline. Sometimes it's very simple, and, and that's why we look for things like SMART goals, specific, measurable, attainable, relevant, and timely. Let me give you a SMART goal. Glenn will lose 30 pounds by September 1st. All right, specific, 30 is 30, it's not 20, it's 30. Relevant. All right, attainable, I know it's attainable, I've done it about 10 times. Relevant and timely, S-M-A-R-T. A SMART goal is not, the kids in Plymouth will feel better about themselves by next October. You know, you want them to feel better about themselves, but it helps to have a measure that you can use as a guidepost. I am not a fan of very strict, rigid, specified measures. I tell you, I, well, I should tell you this, a lot of, a lot of words get abused in our field, and in education, you hear a lot of them. Every time I go to a meeting at the Department of Education, I come back with new, with new terms for my BS bingo card that I, they bring to different places. And, and we're talking about rigor, and during one of our meetings in the community, a kid came up to me and said, "You're talking about rigor, rigor, rigor." Well, as the riggie, I want you to know that there's enough rigor, and can you, can you give us a break? We also, by the way, we have special super-secret authority from the legislature to put certain words on probation. So when we talk about what we do, we don't use the word "micromanage." That's a dirty word in our lexicon, you know, let, let, let the, the head of the Federal Reserve micromanage the economy. We don't use "micromanage." So sometimes people get a little over enthusiastic and they want to get more involved, and people will say, "You're micromanaging and, and it's not appropriate." Another word we don't use is dysfunctional. Yeah, I used to run a children's Yeah, I used to run a children's mental health center before I got into aging, and I know what dysfunction is, and trust me, just because we disagree, that's not dysfunction. Just because you're not doing it my way, that's not dysfunction. Just because I don't like you, doesn't mean it's dysfunctional. So we do that. And the last word we put on probation is the word "R-O-B-U-S-T." That's a culinary term. Starbucks coffee is robust. A good pizza sauce is robust. An educator evaluation system is not robust. A diagnostic test is not robust. If you hear the word "robust" given to you in an educational setting, a storm of BS is coming at you, so just be very careful. However, a good, strong, strategic plan that tells you where you want to go and how you want to get there, and holds people accountable to achieving those measures, can be very important. And your role as school leaders is to make sure that that's happening in your school, and that your school improvement plan reflects that particular strategy of the district. You should be involved at the beginning when the goals are set, advising your principal, so that the principal can advise the superintendent and the school committee. You should be here when those discussions take place, you should make sure that they're reasonable. We're starting to see parents speak up now and say, "One of our strategic plans should be the social and emotional well-being of our kids. It should be that they get a good, solid education, consistent with a good curriculum. It should be that we close our achievement gap, and we do something to address the needs of the kids at greatest risk. Some of the kids who don't have the resources, or may not have the family in order to do what's best." And you see this through the process of your student improvement plan. It doesn't have to be long, it doesn't have to be detailed. In fact, as I said, my rule number one is, "Brief is good." So what do good parent organizations do? They support the public school system, they're leaders and champions for the district. That does not mean that you give up your right to disagree or dissent. We believe in principled criticism and principled dissent. Speak up and say, "I don't like this, I don't think it's working this way." But do it in a way that encourages people to keep you at the table. You want to be at the table, because if you're not at the table, you end up on the menu. And that's not where parents want to be. And in some communities, one or two vociferous, perpetually indignant, angry people tend to hijack everything from the other people who want to do well, and turn people away. That's my big problem with listservs, communication lists. I don't know, any of you on listservs where, you know, you're just responding? You know what happens in a listserv is, my college class has a listserv, and there were 1,200 of us in our graduating class, and there were five people that are on it every day. And I think the rest of us stopped listening. But people who are constructive, people who want to be involved in things to say, are people that are always listened to. So, remain active, remain visible, engage in principled dissent, principled criticism. Now, I'll give you an example of principled dissent. A lot of our districts have talked about elementary...do you have an elementary foreign language program here? You don't? Well, it's on a lot of people's wish list, right after full-day kindergarten and preschool education for all. So if you're having a discussion about which foreign language you should choose, there can be a healthy debate about what it should be. So I actually saw this debate take place. There was somebody who was arguing for Mandarin Chinese as an important language for the future, it could be the language of commerce. Others were arguing for, depending upon the community you're in, maybe Spanish or Portuguese, because they are the most frequently spoken second language in the community. Others might argue for something else. But the problem was, the advocate for Chinese was making the point by saying, "If you knew anything about this, you'd agree with me, but you obviously don't know anything because you're disagreeing with me." It happens more than you might think. And when it happens on cable television, if you're sitting on a school board, you don't appreciate that. If you're at a meeting and you hear that, you don't appreciate that. And if you're sitting around the table at the school council, where nobody's getting paid, at least none among the parents, and everybody's trying to do right, and you may not be the world's foremost expert on this particular topic, but you have the good sense of a parent, and a good sense of someone who brings a lifetime of experience to the table, you don't want somebody not being constructive. Sorry again for the double negative. So that's an important concern. Finally, I should give you the last reason why we adamantly support parent participation, happy that you're here, and hope you'll continue to remain involved. The bad guys in our political world don't like the idea of local government, they really don't. There's something about the higher levels of government, that the higher you go, the more they think that people at the lower levels don't know anything about what they're doing in the field of education. So, we have a Department of Education that views its role as saving school districts from themselves, when in fact, if you visited the department, you saw who was there, you'd see a lot of people who couldn't make it at this level, and that's why they go up to that level. So I see all these...if I could tie the educators to a chair and give them a shot of Thorazine and say, "Am I right?", and they'd all say, "Yes." But we're being discreet here, you only have to happen. So, one of the things you do when you try to undermine the authority of the community is you silence the voices. How do you silence the voices? Well, one of the things the state did in a previous era was, they consolidated the Department of Elder Affairs and put it under a super-agency, the Department of Human Services, took away the authority of the elder advocate voice. And that was influential in how elder advocacy organized. Well, what do you do in a community? You disempower the parent organizations, and you consolidate the school districts. Who stops that from happening? Parents and the members of the community. We had, at one point, someone at the Department of Education, commissioner in fact, tried to give himself, through legislation, the authority to dissolve a school district, under certain circumstances at his discretion. So, we put out the alert to the PTA, the PTOs, parent organizations, suddenly that issue went away. It could come back, but it's happening all over the country, because people don't necessarily want to give up authority at a higher level. In order to have the greatest possible and strongest possible role at the local level, we need engaged parents, we need parents involved school by school, and we need parents involved in the district level. And we need to mobilize the community to become civically engaged. I'm not going to talk about the Common Core debate, I'm not going to talk about the charter school debate. We have another debate, a ballot question regarding legalization of marijuana. All of these questions, and the millionaire's tax that's proposed, are all being debated at the lowest possible denominator of political discourse, because of the complexity tolerance, that people have too much on their plate, they can't understand these issues. It's the role of parents and parent leaders in the community to help educate their community about how important these ballot questions are, and how to resolve them. I'm going to leave it at that, except to say, as someone who's been on your side of the table, and as someone who has relied on my friends in the PTO and the PTA, and in my case, the Friends of Music in my home district, and the Friends of Athletics, because I was a swimmer at one time, and that's the only sport that will make you money, by the way. Kids made a lot of money as lifeguards, I encourage every kid to think about that. Just to say that I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you, I hope at some point maybe we'll come back and do a training session for school councils to get you mobilized, and that you might want to think about some of the many issues where you can be involved and be the place with the table. So thank you very much, and I'm going to give this back to your chair, I believe.
Thank you so much. Next up, we have Policy, I think everybody has a copy of Policy 2.24, School Councils with them. If you don't, they can pass them around, just let us know. And Dr. Sorenson is going to review that.
First of all, I want to thank you all for all the work you do for public education. I want to preface my remarks by telling you that we had to write this robust policy so we could micromanage the dysfunctional school councils. But seriously, the reason why we had to write policy on school councils is because we didn't have a policy, and when Mass General Laws, Chapter 71, Section 59(c) was published, it became necessary to write policy that would be in sync with the Mass General Laws. So I'm going to just take maybe less than 10 minutes to go over this new policy that I think you all received tonight for the first time. I'm going to touch on the roles, the composition, the appointment, the election, and the meeting procedure for councils. A lot of this you already know, there are some finer points that have changed, and they're critical points, so I'm going to make sure I touch upon those. And as you all know, because you've worked on councils, the role of the council has always been to advise and assist the principal on educational goals and educational needs, on the review of the budget, and on the accommodation of the curriculum. And in doing all of that, a school improvement plan gets written, and that gets presented. So, the role of the school council has remained fairly consistent in Plymouth even after the new law. The composition of the school councils has changed somewhat dramatically for us, because the statute now is very clear, that there must be parity between parents and school employees or school personnel, and that would count anybody who's employed by the district. If there are four members of the council that are employed by the district at any level, there must then be four parents. So that has to be balanced. At the present time, many of our councils are not balanced. So, when Mr. Gordon and myself and Dr. Campbell wrote, worked on this policy back in October, we decided not to ask for the implementation of the policy until next September. So, we're sending it back to all of you to realize that the composition has to change, so there is this parity. There's also a statement in the new law that says there should be at least one non-member participant on the council. A non-member is defined as an individual who is not a parent in the school, in that particular school, and is not an employee of the district. It's somebody who puts forth their own name to be on the council, and there should be at least one non-member. So now we have personnel, parents, and a non-member. So we're going to be looking for the councils to follow this policy and create that balance. The election of members is a little bit different now as well. The school personnel, that is, the teachers who want to participate on the council, they have to present their name to the principals before the 10th day of school for the next academic year. So before the 10th day of every academic year, the teachers have to present their names to the principals of the teachers who are going to be on the council. If there are more teachers than the council can accept in terms of numbers, there'll have to be an election. The teachers will have to elect the right number of individuals and forward those names to the principal by the 10th day of school. The same thing holds true for parents. If there are more parents that want to be on an individual council than the numbers can allow, the parents have to determine who those people will be. The principal will then take the names of all the interested parents, send those names back to the PTA and all the homeschool associations. And those two groups, meeting together, will have an election by secret ballot, and those names will then be forwarded to the principal. And so now we will have the teachers, the parents, and if there's a non-member who wants to volunteer, the principal will have to pick the non-member. So that, all of that has to be done by the 10th day of school, next year. All elected individuals to the council will serve a two-year term, so when you put your name in, you're volunteering for two years. Now, as far as the conduction of the meeting, councils by regulation should be meeting once every month. The first meeting should take place by the, no later than the 40th day after the first day of school. And they should meet once a month, and the principal will have to design an orientation session for that very first meeting that occurs in September, early October. And finally, the last point that I wanted to reference is that the link between, and actually, I'm not going to go into it, because I think Mr. Kuchy did it really well, the link between the school committee and the council, we really need to get input from the council. So the work that you all do goes through the principal, to the superintendent, and then to the school council, and working in concert, we improve the system. So thank you very much for listening, and I hope to see you all in September.
And next up, we have Managing the Finances with Mr. Costin, he's going to give a presentation on that.
Good evening. I know this is the items you starred, you couldn't wait to see, so...oh, PowerPoint, great. I had my back to you, so I apologize. How many people are from PTAs or homeschool associations? Okay, anyone from booster clubs? Okay, how about the IRS? Anybody, Internal Revenue? Okay, yeah, I know about you. So I have a very, I promise, a very short PowerPoint, that I'd like to go through just a few suggestions, and I have a handout, which is probably going to be a bestseller by tomorrow, or Cure Insomnia up here, on more in-depth financial procedures and precautions and steps that you can take. So now you expect me to use, I need a SMART goal to know how to use this. So, push the button. Okay, this is the plan, make me look good, right? Turn it on, oh. Oh. Oh, good. Notice the cover, I like this, you know, this is, we need to do a fundraiser for a cover here. We have a lot in common, and I said this the last time that we did this slide, this presentation, because we realize that we're all responsible for money, whether we receive it from taxpayers, you receive it from parents, we receive public funds, and we're receiving it on behalf of the students of Plymouth Public Schools. I put up the number, $3.2 million, not to brag, that's actually a year or so old, but to, that, a lot of times, people are surprised how much money we handle. I would guarantee that the public would be very surprised how much money that you handle that goes through your organizations. It's extremely surprising. And the reason I asked about booster clubs, I had some information, but not to pick on booster clubs, but they tend to not have as a formal structure as the PTA and a national organization. But there are a lot of councils, groups out there that do not have financial procedures in place, which is very, very surprising. And whether an actual arm of the school district or an association by name, we are all held to a higher level standard. We know that, we read things in the newspaper, if somebody works for a school, somebody's a PTA member, that certainly is in the first headline. We're very vulnerable to scrutiny, and I have a little cartoon here that, and you can see this gentleman's reading to his son, how much of Robin Hood's money went to fundraising expenses and campaign contributions, and how much actually went to the poor. So everyone's kind of aware and in tune to this, with what's going on. So I have about 10 very quick points I'd like to make. Suggestion one would be, create accounts, a culture of accountability. Perception is reality. If you give the sense that you're in control of the finances, everyone else will automatically feel better about that, but they'll also know that there are some controls in place. With controls, you need to establish internal controls and follow them. With controls, you need to establish internal controls and follow them. If you need to revise them, do them quickly, they should be written, everyone should be aware of them. At the school district level, we have a financial procedure manual, that's about that thick, and we also have one for grants, that we're required to have for federal grants, it's about half an inch thick. You should make sure that we follow, everyone follows the financial procedures. Share your financials on a routine basis. That's something that I would assume that you would do at your meetings, that you would let people know how you're doing, let your officers know. The treasurer should be informing the officers and the membership. You should have financial statements that are shared, so everyone should have a good understanding of what's going on with your finances. Okay, suggestion number four. Know the answers. If not, ask the questions. Again, this goes back to knowledge, knowledge being power, knowledge being comfort, knowledge being the perception that you know what's going on financially in your organization. If you're asked, and Plymouth is, and sometimes we use t-shirt talent, I think sometimes we, we have a lot of t-shirts, but you can see who have children in the schools, when you drive around, you're going to activities. But there are a lot of activities that occur during the school year for fundraising, and somebody may ask you at the grocery store or something, hey, how did you do at the car wash? I volunteered there. So to know those things and to display and portray, to demonstrate that you know those things is very, very important. District policies, as you know, we have a very extensive policy manual, and it's extremely important that you're aware of school district policies. There tends to be change in leadership sometimes, and everyone should be aware of the policies. We do have a fundraising policy, there are forms that need to be filled out, permissions that need to be obtained, and it's extremely important that everyone's aware of the policies. Handling cash. Cash is where your organization is most vulnerable. I don't know if you remember Wall Street, Gordon Gekko, greed is good. We say cash is bad, because we don't like cash, because cash is too easy, too tempting. It's also where you're the most vulnerable, but we're also, whether of being, having an intent or not having an intent, mistakes can be made, and it's hard to track cash. So you have to make sure you have financial procedures in place to handle cash. Make sure that you have, many hands, many, this one's kind of creepy, actually. Divide up duties and labor, be careful. Be careful not to fragment tasks, and following this practice is your first level of checks and balances. I know that there are limited memberships in your organizations, and that you have to divide up duties, and that there's so many people to spread it around, but you really need to make sure that you divide up your duties and your financial responsibilities, especially when handling cash. Suggestion number eight, the organization should handle and account for funds as it would a business. And a lot of times, we kind of say in our office, that we are a business, we're a $100 million corporation, and you, as PTAs, would handle a large amount of money also, so treat it as a business, and when you do your financials, that's really what your financials are, asset liability, income, they're all business terms. And I know we're dealing with students, and that's what our organizations are set up to do, but we still need to have those basic business principles. This one is always a tough one, again, because of the numbers of volunteers that you have in your organization, but you really should designate two people as an audit team. And your books, your organization should audit your books every year, take a look at your books, have somebody from the outside who doesn't handle the money, look at the finances. In some cases, and I'll throw this out there, if you're, of course, have smaller PTAs, maybe one PTA could help another PTA, if you have larger numbers, just to take a look at how you're doing things and sharing. And I know that's something, when we had a district-wide PTA meeting, I remember we presented that option too. And record-keeping must be accurate, it's extremely important. Any officer should be able to review, you should have an open checkbook, so to speak, you should be able to review the finances, be able to provide information. I know when the school committee often asks me for information, of course, I'm able to have it right that second. No, usually it's, very quickly, I'm able to give it to them, but it's extremely important to have that information. This is something new. We've been working with our insurance companies, our insurance company through town to tighten up our insurance practices. And I don't really think we have an issue with the PTAs, because I know you have national insurance, but it's extremely important for groups that, when they come in, fundraising groups, to use the school facilities, they have to have minimum liability requirements. Workers' comp generally doesn't apply, because you don't have employees. Automobile doesn't usually apply, because you're not driving our students or driving around. But these are the minimum requirements that we require to have. And when you put in a request in SchoolDude for our facilities, it'll ask you about the insurance policy. The PTAs update their insurance every year, we do it through a program called SchoolDude, so that's generally not an issue, but it's something in the world that we're in that we have to, we have to ask for. And finally, a few reminders. One of the things that I need to remind, and the principals are here too, is that all support organizations need to have their own mailing billing address. This cannot be, it can be a post office box, personal mailing address, cannot be a school address. We shouldn't be receiving, or nor, I don't think you want us to, receiving your mail. Sometimes what happens is that we'll get bills, and you may have a remit too, but you're using our billing address, we'll get mailed to our schools for a bill, we have no idea what it is. And we're starting to track it down. So really, if it's mailed to a post office box, a home address, however you want to do it, but it really shouldn't be, it shouldn't be going to a school. Nor should, and I know you don't do this, the PTA, but any organization shouldn't be using a tax ID number. You have to have your own tax ID number. So with that, thank you for all you do, I know it was exciting, and up here, we do have a handout for more reading. So thank you.
I'm sure you all have seen this wonderful card that was put together about the 2020 strategic plan. Now, Dr. Myers is going to talk a little bit more about that strategic plan.
Thank you. At the end, we'll open up the questions, in case any of you have questions regarding any of the stuff that we talked about tonight. Mr. Costin, that was a very robust presentation. I know people are very compelled by your financial acumen, so we're excited. So tonight, I want to present to you the strategic plan. I want to walk through the plan briefly, I don't want to go through all the details. I want to talk a little bit how it was developed, and also, if you would like a copy, we have copies up here, if you didn't get one, you can pick one up afterwards. This strategic plan is, a great deal of, a great deal of effort went into this, and we're very fortunate that we had a lot of community stakeholders that actually helped to assemble this. Ms. Badger talked briefly about the plan on a page, which is a little card that's on the back of this book. And on the back, it really gives you an idea of a brief understanding or overview of what the strategic plan is all about, in regards to the mission, the values, core beliefs, and the four goals that were developed in the strategic plan. And keep in mind, this is the second strategic plan that the school department has had, that has really directed the direction of the district over, will be the next five years and the past five, so it'll take us to 2020. We actually built the first strategic plan back in 1995, excuse me, 2000, actually, am I, am I, no, 2011. I'm going way back, I've been here for a long time. So back 2011, we did our first strategic plan, and this'll take us over a 10-year span with the second one. The concept and idea of doing our strategic plan was to give us the idea of focusing our efforts in the district, because as you all know, you know, how do you implement consistency from school to school to school? And one of the things that we believed is helping us to do that, and looking at programming and things of that nature, is having a consistent document that guides the district in the efforts that we undertake. So the strategic plan really is designed to help do that. The work in the strategic plan is not the work of my staff or the school committee, it really is the work of the volunteers that came together to help assemble our strategic plan. So one of the things that I was very careful on, as well as the staff that helped work on this, is the only thing I did at the meetings was facilitate the meeting. I didn't write the document, we helped assemble it, but the work, the goals, the mission, the upgrades that we made, were purely the influence of the people that sat at the table that helped us to do this. So let's take a walk through that. The whole idea of creating the strategic plan was to create a framework to identify the priorities of the district. And you know what? If you ask me what our priorities are, and you ask somebody else what the priorities are, you ask any school council team what the priorities are, they may be different. And what we wanted to do was create some level of guiding document that helped us to be on the same page. And ensure consistencies among schools, and hopefully, inconsistencies in the strategic plans that we see down the road. And I think what Dr. Sorenson was talking about tonight is also the alignment of how school councils work with the strategic plan and develop goals to ensure that there's school improvement. And provide a goal-setting guide for everyone working in the district. I'm not sure how many of you know, but with the new teacher evaluation system, teachers work with their evaluators to generate goals. This document is helping us to do that. So when we have these sit-down conversations with our staff, we work on developing goals that are based on the strategic plan. Okay? So that is the whole idea of trying to create that consistency. Serve as a vehicle for change. Assist the district in recommending programming and improvements. I will tell you, one of the things that really came of strategic planning and strategic mobilization was the implementation of the Full Day K program. And I will tell you, there is no better way to demonstrate how common effort can create common good, when you take a look at the process that it took to get Full Day K implemented in Plymouth, because it took parents to get information, to know what to say, to know what to do, when to do it, to be able to get that program to go. That's a prime reason why strategic planning is really important to us. And then guiding the district to work for the next five years to focus and foster 21st century students. These are the people that helped us. As you can see, there are quite a few people, it took quite a long time to develop, we had many meetings over time, but I want to, you know, highlight the people on this slide here, because, you know, coming at, you know, 6:30, 7 o'clock over to the North High School Library, although it's a beautiful library, after a very long day, even serving food, it was still difficult to get everybody to, you know, just to come and show up, and their work was absolutely remarkable, so we want to thank this group for their hard work. So the process, we established a team comprising of representatives, key stakeholders, administrators, teachers, students, parents, and community members, facilitated by district administration. So my team, we facilitated meetings, or we facilitated different groups. Keep in mind that we were not driving the conversation, we were there for resources, and we wanted to make sure that the people that were sitting at the table had influence and had a say in exactly what was being presented and ultimately developed. And data, we wanted to use the data that we've collected on student achievement, we wanted to use data on impressions that we had of the district, and we also used data in the form of surveys that we collected from our stakeholders to actually get feedback so that we could develop the plan. And then group activities to understand the data. So once we collected it, what does it mean? We have a lot of data, but our goal was to take a look at what that data is telling us to drive our goals for the future. The data says one thing, well, what are we going to do to help to address that? And areas of opportunity that were identified, if we saw that there were things working in our district, or things that were emerging in our district, how would we focus on those bits and pieces and spread that knowledge and that desire around the district? And then we formulated the renewed goals for 2020, and communicate the 2020 plan to the community and stakeholders. So we had a long list of things that we needed to get done. I'll tell you, everyone in that committee was extremely grateful to actually get it done. For us, I think it's absolutely wonderful that we stuck to it, we got it done, it's on the table, and we've shared it across the community. Not only have we given it to all our buildings and our teachers, but we've given it to town meeting members, everywhere where our school committee goes, and somebody asks a question, they want to refer to the strategic plan. I was at a meeting a couple of weeks ago over at Beth Israel, and one of our community volunteers, who's very active, she had the little card on the table, and she told me three or four times at that meeting, I love this card, because it keeps me on task. And I think that's one of the things that we wanted the card to do, is just have people always refer back to those four goals, our mission, our core values, so that we can always be focused on what we're trying to do in the district. And we hope that in your groups, when you sit and have those discussions, that you really use this as a resource to help you with your goal setting. So this is basically how we put all of this together. This chart demonstrates that our stakeholders, we took a look at the core values, vision and mission, we took a look at our past strategic plan, our district improvement action plans and school improvement plans, and we really use the data that the state gives us. The state collects a great deal of information from our school district, they collect a great deal of information from all of our children, and we have the ability to actually look at that data and use that for decision-making, and we did that as well. So if you take a look at the process, we used quite a bit of information to actually generate the strategic plan. The data collection process, these are some of the data points that we used, the district data with MCAS, which is our state assessment, AYP reports, TSAT, Technology Survey, district mandated assessments, common assessments, and so on. We have surveys, communities that care survey that we offered this past year, town hall style meetings, attendance data, dropout rate, demographic data, course, grades, discipline data, and post-secondary statistics. So we took a lot of review, a lot of the information that we have, and some that we collected, and others that we extracted from parents that we met with and interviewed, and got impressions of what they believed. And we started looking at patterns, and where those patterns identified areas of improvement, and areas that we needed to work on. One of the things that Glenn Kucher said earlier is absolutely true, and I think the school committee believes that, I think Dr. Sorenson said it as well, we are a very functional school district, we have a lot of things working in the right direction, we have to find the things that are going to help us to be even better than what we are today. And we believe strategic planning will allow us to do that. So that's the whole goal of us trying to go down this road. So we had our survey that we offered, and these are the categories you can see, we went all the way from school leadership to district leadership, community engagement, instruction culture, I won't read them to you, but you can see the different categories and type of questions that we asked within the surveys. Building upon the success of the initial strategic plan, I will tell you that a lot of the alignment that we have seen in our school district over the past five years has come because of the consistency of what we're working on through strategic planning. Keep in mind, this is what we're releasing tonight, and what you have in your hands, if you don't have it afterwards, you can get it. This is our second-ever strategic plan, and it's really designed to try to give you as councils and organizations that support our schools, that consistency. So the mission statement, you have it in front of you, you can take a look at it, we worked with this, we fumbled with it, but we believe... We worked with this, we fumbled with it, but we believe that this is what our mission is. And I will tell you, the second word there is "key." It's partnership, partnership, partnership. I talked to somebody yesterday about raising children and the school system. And I said to them, "I would be happy if it was a 50-50 partnership." I would be happy. Sometimes it's not 50-50. Sometimes it's a lot less, sometimes it's a lot more. But if we could be at a 50-50 partnership that we know what piece of the pie we have, I think we would be extremely successful as a district. So the goal here is to really look at what our mission is, is to create a partnership environment that we are all working towards the same thing, to enhance the lives of the children that we come in contact with every day, your children. And I think that's the core, what we believe. This isn't, in my view, if I were to really look at what I believe as a person, as an educator, as a husband, as a father, that I believe that our goal is to really help, help you as parents to raise children so that they can become successful. So I believe that this goal states that. This mission states that. The vision statement is the Plymouth schools will be recognized nationally as an outstanding school district. I think we all want that. I can tell you, there isn't one parent in this room that doesn't want to walk outside and go to any venue and be proud of the school system that your children are part of or proud that you live in this community, to say that my kids are going to the Plymouth Public Schools and I am proud. Because it's an outstanding school system. So that is our overarching vision statement. Our goal is how do we create that? I know we have spots and pieces and bits of that, but how do we make that consistent across the board? And that's our vision. And I believe that the parents that were with us throughout this process, the stakeholders, they really believe that as well. Our core beliefs. We believe that every student should become an effective communicator, independent thinker, problem solver, responsible citizen, self-directed lifelong learner, and valuable contributor. These are some powerful statements or phrases, but I think as parents, we want our kids to be prepared, prepared for the day they cross that stage at graduation. That's one of the proudest days that I have when I'm in this school system, is to see our kids cross that stage. It's scary, but I want to know that they're prepared. And I know you as parents want that as well. Our strategic goals, these are the four goals that we have in our strategic plan. Enhance student social and emotional growth, health, welfare, demonstration of civic responsibility. We want our kids to be healthy. Not only healthy, to be able to exercise, but emotionally healthy. We want our kids to be, that they actually know how to take care of themselves. And hopefully we can build that for, so every kid. It's a challenge. It's a big challenge. This is my 17th year in the Plymouth Public Schools. I've been superintendent for eight. When I came here 17 years ago, our free and reduced lunch rates were at 14%. They're in the mid-30s right now across the district. So this first goal makes it, it's a little bit harder to do now. But you know what? We have a community that cares. We have a community, we have teachers that care, we have administrators that care. And I believe that this goal is, in some schools, it's higher of a goal than other schools, but I'll tell you, it's on the radar. Increase family and community engagement. So you being here tonight is not by mistake. It's not by mistake. It's not something that we felt was necessary. It's something that was mandatory. Because the school committee, for years, has told me, "We need to have a community forum to talk about this stuff." And guess what? Like Ms. Badger said, this is the first of many. We hope to continue the dialogue. But how do we engage? How do we engage all the parent organizations in our community? There are many. To focus on the goals. And that's why I say to you, the strategic plan is increasingly important. Because if you read this through, you'll understand what we're working on. So when you're developing your goals through your organization, you will see exactly what we're trying to do, your goals will align with ours. Enhance academic achievement for all students at all levels. That's exactly what Mr. Kuchar said, Dr. Kuchar said earlier tonight. You know, move it all to the side. Put me and move the sports to the side, everything else to the side. You want your children to be academically proficient. We do too. And how can we do that strategically? And the last goal is provide strong district and school leadership. How do we retain and recruit and work with leaders in this district that understand exactly what the mission of the district is and how do they carry that mission out? And that's what the four goals are of the strategic plan. Okay? So that's exactly what we're working on. It's something that we believe is essential to raise our district up where we want to So you can take a look at some of the bullet points. I'm not going to walk through them. I walked through the goals. You can actually, when you get a chance, I know this might be dull reading to some of you, but it will make a lot of sense. If you watch a school committee meeting, when you go to your school council meetings, if you're at a PTA meeting and you need some level of understanding of what the district is on a particular issue, this might be your reference document. Okay? I would urge you to keep this with you. And I know I've already seen some of our community volunteers actually use it, and I'm grateful to see that happening. So these are our different goals. And these are, you can see the different objectives behind each goal. And these are some of the measurable strategies. I know they're too hard to read and I just got glasses earlier this year and I probably should have changed the font to make them a little bit, make it a little bit bigger. But if you walk through these, you can actually see the measurable goals that we put in at each level, from the elementary, the middle, the high school, and the district. So these are measurable strategies that we felt as a committee had some level of personality and some level of momentum that we could actually enhance. So if you take a look at these measurable strategies and you're developing your school improvement plan, I can tell you, these are, there are some nuggets in here that you could really pick off that would be some areas of focus within your, within your school improvement plans. Okay? Even in your groups that you work in that aren't associated with school improvement, your homeschool associates. I know all of you aren't all PTAs. I know some schools are homeschool associations still. But when you do your planning, you, I would hope that you would pull this out and take a look at it. So I'll just walk through these. One of the things that we did after each goal, we put in a technology component. So not only did we put those measurable strategies, but we added a technology component that was overlaid with our technology plan. While we were working with our strategic plan, a few doors down, we had another group that was working on refreshing our technology plan. And those goals from the technology plan were meshed together with the strategic plans so that we could give you a good understanding of how technology fit in with this particular goals that you see in our plan. Again, you can walk through these, they're all set up the same way, the same structure. The document that you have has it in the same fashion and format. You can walk through the four goals and the different strategies. At the end of the strategic plan, you'll have a glossary of terms. Because in education, just like any other profession or any other entity, there are certain words that you get, they get lost in the shuffle with abbreviations. So we put a glossary, so you'll actually go to the back and refer to those. Gave a list of resources, the timeline, and in the back, you'll also see the survey that we sent out for the strategic plan. This document is online as well. If you go to our website and you can do a search for strategic plan and you can actually get this document and you can download it. So you don't, if you don't have a hard copy, anyone who wants to get a copy of it, it's actually downloadable and you can use it. And it's searchable too. So you can actually do a keyword search and you can do it in a PDF format. So then after we built the strategic plan, these were the steps that we have taken to move forward. The school improvement plans will be designed to align with district strategic plan goals. And that's one of the things that we've told our principals, is that we want you as the school councils to really use this document. And I've said this probably five times already while I've been up here, that this document should be the focus of your school improvement exercise, exercises that you use to develop your school improvement plan. Our administrative goals are based on this as well. So all of us, not only my goals, but the goals of my administrative team and the principals, assistant principals, coordinators, directors, all the way down to our support staff, their goals, objectives are really built on the strategic plan. And each goal of the strategic plan will have a, have a committee which will meet regularly to review the status of the goal. So what we decided is that on a yearly basis, so over the next five years, we did this with the first strategic plan, we will meet periodically to really monitor how we're really achieving the goals of the strategic plan to make sure that we're on track. Because one of the things that we really didn't want with the strategic plan, and one of the only things that I said day one when we did the first strategic, strategic plan is, we really didn't want this plan to sit on a shelf and it was something that everyone referred to, but nobody actually had a copy of and ever read. So one of the things that we want to do is make sure that we are continually monitoring our progress to make sure that we're staying true to the goals of the strategic plan. And we will continue to do that. And then we will report on those achievements, those shortfalls, or those benchmarks back to school committee. And we will do that every year until 2020. One of the things that's, one item that's pretty interesting that I was paging through it again today, you know, 2020 is the 400th celebration of Plymouth. And one of the things that we added to, to the strategic plan is the awareness of the 400th celebration and the history of Plymouth, which is going to be a big buildup. And I believe that our schools are going to be very, very involved in that whole progression from now until 2020. So, you know, one of the things that we have to do is how do we monitor that and how do we continually work on activities and curriculum and objectives to really help with the commemoration of 2020, the 400th anniversary of Plymouth? It's an exciting time to be a student in Plymouth. It's an exciting time to be an educator. And we hope that the strategic plan can help us guide our way to 2020. So I think that's it. So we have one more presentation. Dr. Campbell is going to talk a little bit. And then afterwards, we will open it up to questions and then I will close. But again, afterwards, I will let you know that we do have more handouts here if you didn't get any of the items we've talked about. So Dr. Campbell, there you go. And there's your clicker.
So for the next 90 minutes, I promise, I promise I'll try to be as brief as possible. First of all, thank you for coming, not only for coming tonight, but for, for coming out on behalf of your kids and the kids in your schools and all of our schools. My name's Chris Campbell, I'm one of the assistant superintendents here in Plymouth. Lived in Plymouth for the last 16 years and have three kids that attend our schools. So it's, it's really great to be not only a part of the administration here, but to be a parent within this community. It's a great, it's a great community to raise kids and so it's just a great place. So with that, I wanted to talk about a new opportunity that we're hoping to make, an annual event, and it's our Family Leadership Conference. This is going to be advertised in Wednesday, hopefully. We'll be getting the word out to the entire community about this. It's going to be Saturday, May 21st, here at North High School, and it's going to be a pretty big event. We've got a lot of people that have been doing a lot of great things on behalf of this opportunity. Many of them are in this room, so I thank you all for continued involvement yet again. But I'm just going to talk about it briefly, okay? The reason, we've been talking about policies and programs a lot, and that's really important. You all are instrumental in that, but we realize that, you know, we can have all the policies and programs in the world, but if we don't have the connectedness of our families and our parents, it's really all for none. The parents are extremely important to the process and we, but we really need to engage all families. And that's the part that, you know, my hope, at least with this Family Leadership Conference, and we started calling it the Parent Leadership Conference, but after some discussion at our meetings, said, "We really need to change it to families." Because one statistic, I don't know if a lot of people in this room know about, but I heard it from the DA's office recently, is Plymouth, our town, has the largest percentage of children who were raised by grandparents in the entire county. So that's pretty substantial. So when we talk about, you know, parents, we also talk about grandparents and so forth, aunts and uncles. So it's really important that we really engage all of our families in this process. So that's our hope. Okay? We all know the benefits. I'm not going to read this to you. We know the research behind and we can see it. When families are involved and there's connections, students benefit, our schools benefit, teachers benefit, and families benefit. So there's, and there's a lot of benefits. We can go on and on and on about this. As the superintendent mentioned in our strategic plan, if you look at that mission statement right at the beginning, "In partnership with parents and the community," and also goal two, as specific as Gary said, "To family and community engagement." It's something that we really believe in. It came out of a lot of work from this entire community. We had over 1,300 people that engaged in the process, which was really exciting. It was more than double last time. So it's really exciting to see so many people getting engaged in the process. And we need to continue that, not just through these processes, but to have opportunities and events for folks to get engaged in. Okay? There's lots of reasons people don't get involved, whether it's time, misperceptions, communications, the availability to come out. Not everyone can come out or make themselves available when we have events. So it's really important that we take these into consideration. Interest, relationships, secondary level, once kids start getting older. And this is a little fuzzy. I know people are looking at this. It's not your eyes, the font is messed up. I just wanted to mess with all of you to see, you know, is it me getting tired listening to him or is it the font? I noticed a couple of people. It's not you. Okay? So the barriers, these are barriers and our goal, excuse me, is to always try to reduce those barriers. Is anyone here from Plymouth Family Network? PFN? PFN? Parent in the background. Yes. Anyone familiar with PFN, Plymouth Family Network? All right, great. My wife and I moved here 16 years ago, just before my son was born. And the first thing we were trying to do when we moved here was to try to connect with families. And we didn't know, we didn't know a lot of families. So my wife became aware of Plymouth Family Network. And to this day, we have a lot of relationships with families that we met through that. And not only is it great to build those relationships, parent to parent, but the resources and community, opportunities and making connections with the district and the community that's as big as we are, 104 square miles. It's a huge town. It can be a little overwhelming to a new family. Okay? So our goal, I think, with this conference is to, is to try to replicate some of the things that that, that network does. Not just in this one opportunity, but to try to do that throughout the year. Okay? So this whole process began back in November. There was letters sent out and many of the people in this room actually raised their hand and have been participating since November. We had about 40 to 50 people that are working on this. Since November, we were working on the mission for the committees and workshop logistics, community resources and supplies. There's a lot of things that have been working on behind the scenes. Okay? We have a mission, and I will read this briefly. "The mission of the Family Leadership Conference is to provide training, information, and assistance to equip families with strategies to successfully support our children. Conference is presented by Plymouth Public Schools." Conference is presented by Plymouth Public Schools in collaboration with many volunteers and community organizations and allows participants the opportunity to learn about positive relationships, curriculum and instruction, parenting, nutrition, nutrition and wellness and so much more. So we're hoping that this annual event is something, um, not only that happens later in the year, but it's something that we can sort of, um, replicate in smaller, um, opportunities throughout the year in different venues and different opportunities. Cause it's really important and it's kind of what the Plymouth Family Network does when you think about that. Um, but let's try to do that at a, at a larger scale for families of all ages. Okay? So this conference is going to be free. It's going to be open up to parents. It's going to be open up to teachers, uh, leaders, youth leaders, you name it. We're opening it up to everyone and hope that we get some great attendance. And our desire, as I've said a couple of times already, is that the workshop presented during this conference is just the beginning of many opportunities that we spread throughout this district, um, throughout the years to come. Okay? Yes. So what we'll be doing, um, sort of a breakdown, it's only going to be a half day. So we really, if you have the opportunity on May 21st to come out, I encourage you to do so. More information, as I said, will be coming out, uh, Wednesday, probably early evening hours. Um, at 8:30, we'll have registration, light refreshments. Uh, we have a keynote from Mass PTA who also serves on the Board of Education with Mass PTA. Um, very excited to have her with us to sort of kick off this event and, um, sort of set the stage for, for the day. Um, and then we'll have a number of workshop opportunities that will be about an hour long. So you don't have to sit as long as you've been sitting here and listening, you know, but there'd be short opportunities that you can decide where you want to go. So we're hoping to have about 16 to 18 different workshops, um, that, and we have pretty much that right now. Um, we're just working on the descriptions. Um, but you could, you could see, you know, two that you really like and get information. And our hope is to, um, with permission is to videotape that and put that out to a larger audience later. So we're looking at other barriers to, to get that information and have materials available online. But we really want this to be a big event where you have some choices. So there'd be elementary choices, middle, high school, things that affect or addressed at all district, district level. We also will have family and community resources, um, set up as exhibits. So resources within the community, uh, available. So that will be spread throughout, um, the workshops. So, um, more to come on that. Okay? And these are just some examples, social media and teens, student digital learning. The YMCA will be talking about some, um, family, strengthening family initiatives that they're, they've been involved in and will bring to us. Some from prevention resources for education for parents around, um, wellness. Understanding elementary math and literacy is something that was a, a big desire. We'll have that as also, as well as student transition and a whole lot more. These are just some examples. So, um, I only come here to speak to you tonight to talk about this, to let you know, to expect more information. If you have any ideas, suggestions, or if you want to get involved, you can see me afterwards. I'm happy to talk to you. Um, but, um, we're hoping that it's a big event and a big success. So with that, I hope I was brief. I tried to be. Um, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. I'll turn it over to you, Gary, and you can get open the dialogue about everything. Thank you.
Mr. Kearney, you have questions?
Yeah, you know, that's our A-1 that we shared out. We, we will have, we will have a website and online registration form with all that that will go out. Yep. That's kind of our one.
It will be. So the questions, will all this be advertised on social media, Facebook, webpage, so on? Uh, Dr. Campbell's going to send something out on Wednesday evening that will have, uh, signup information. So I think the best thing that you can possibly do for this opportunity is send it out to your friends. If you know parents that want to come out and spend a day learning some of these, uh, key, key, uh, points. I mean, parents have come forward and suggested some of these offerings. So if, if it's something that, uh, you're interested or a friend might be interested, come in, grab, grab a refreshment in the morning and spend half the day, um, in the district, learning more about what's happening. So at that point, are there any questions regarding any of the to- topics that we, uh, shared tonight? Yes, Ms. Lawrence?
Um, we, 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 we,[1425.01]